All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. It's Commissioners check in for Monday, June 20, 2024. It's 2:07 PM. My name is Ty Manser, Chair of the Board. We have Commissioner Emily Claus in the boardroom, Commissioner Carolina Mejia on Zoom, and we have Community Manager Leonard Hernandez. Public virtual attendance is all available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. This meeting is being livestreamed. So Commissioner Edwards, I think, is in another meeting, and Commissioner Fournier was tied up with some other business and may be able to join us or may not. We're not sure. So with three Commissioners we have, we have an opportunity to report on external boards and commissions. If Commissioner Mejia, do you have anything you'd like to report?
This weekend, attended several events down in Tenino, attended the Nisqually Land Trust event, attended the TRPC Council meeting on Friday. I had a joint meeting with Commissioner Fournier with Assessor Drew. And I also attended the art contest, and I just really want to give a huge shout out to Matt and Taylor. They did such a fantastic job and just all the art submissions were so wonderful. And just choosing one was very hard. So just thank you so much, Taylor, and thank you so much, Matt, for all of your hard work. Attended a community land trust event held at Panorama, attended the 100 Women Who Care About Kids, attended our fair board meeting with our new fair coordinator, and that was very exciting. And attended part of the intercity transit meeting as well as part of the Planning Commission meeting, which was a public hearing in regards to LRA.
Okay. How would that go?
Not as much public comment as I thought there would be, but I did receive an email from Representative Cotor. And he has some suggestions for us as well, which I have sent over to staff. But I'll be reaching out and seeing, you know, if we can kind of... The Planning Commission is going to have one more session on this at their future meeting to kind of... They were discussing some ideas, and so they're going to... Staff is going to bring some options for them at the next meeting.
Okay, that's interesting. That... So it sounds like you got maybe a different email. I also got an email from Representative Cotor, and I was going to bring that up as one of my Commissioner items because he basically said in my email that he had watched the meeting and basically thought that there were things that could be done to make it better. And he basically was just saying, "Could you please check in with me before the board takes any sort of decisive action?" And I sent him back a response saying that, thanking him for engaging and telling him that I would or we would check in with him. I know they worked on this issue extensively at state level last year, so he may have some insight into what we can and can't do in the ordinance at a local level. So it probably behooves us to check in with him before the board takes any further action. But did you get some... It sounds like maybe you got some specific suggestions from him.
Well, yeah, it was a similar email with a little bit of some specific suggestions, and that's why I sent it over to staff, because that's what the Planning Commission is literally going to be discussing at the next meeting. There were some implications with like, "Well, is it legal for us to do this?" Were several of the questions, and staff were like, "Well, we need to, like, you know, get back to you on this." So I know that, you know, staff is like looking to see, like, at those options. So that's why I sent them over that email to kind of see, like, is this something that, you know, we can do? And it's, I think, a good time for the Planning Commission to also have that conversation at that level as well.
Okay, good.
Chair, an email was also sent to Leah. It was on Attorney Lee who forwarded it over to me. She sent a response. And so I've asked Rob and CPED to round up. They had some specific comments in the email that they sent over in watching the item, areas that they thought some clarification could be provided. So we were going to round up, connect with them, and then... But anything we put together, we'll share with the full board so that we're all on the same page as to staff's responses.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Claus, external reports?
Yeah, just a couple. Nothing really too significant. I had the disability board meeting last week for the law enforcement and firefighters. That was a pretty quick meeting, but it was the first one since I've been appointed because they typically get canceled if there's no disability applications. So that was pretty cool to finally get to attend one of those. And then I had a one-on-one with Auditor Hall and a one-on-one with the Director of Emergency Services, Ben. That's all I did last week.
Okay. Looking at my notes, I had sea level rise meeting on Friday. And the consultants that were hired to look at financing structures are going to be issuing a report. They gave kind of a preliminary summary of it. They looked at special districts. Apparently, there's like 80 different kinds of special districts in Washington, and they've determined the top two that they think could apply to financing sea level rise response. And one of them is the cultural arts stadium and convention district, which sounds a little odd, but there's something about it that fits. I'm trying... I can't remember the details of that. The other one is the flood control zone district. Both of these types of districts can issue bonds, get financing, and levy property taxes. For the cultural and arts one, the entire city, you can't split a city up. The entire city must be included within the boundaries of the district. They found five federal grants that they thought could fit this kind of work. They looked at state sources, but the main opportunity is going to be through the Climate Commitment Act, so that would have to be reauthorized by voters in November. So hopefully, it's just yet another reason why that would be good to have reauthorized. The special district would open up financing tools and other private, public-private partnerships that could help. The next step for them is community engagement on what the structure should look like and create an actual financial plan and then do a gap risk assessment with these consultants. And the consultants are Colin Resnick. There was questions from the group about public-private partnerships and how they work. Apparently, they're much more frequently used in Europe and in the United States, but they can work here. And then we had an implementation plan update. So that was about... And we went over what's on the draft work plan. So for the next work... For the next year's work plan, it's developing a monitoring strategy, installing a geodetic array to monitor subsidence on the peninsula, funding analysis that I just described, the public outreach, and they're going to continue to pursue grants. And then, yeah, there's a discussion about just administration and finance of the actual work of the collaborative. That's about it for my external. I attended a whole bunch of events. I did meet the new executive directors of Together. That was interesting to hear about. They have some new programming.
Do you know that person's name?
Sierra and there's two. If I let me pull up my notes, I can get them both for you. They're not the two that were there before.
Carlo.
What's that?
It's Carlo.
Carlo, yes. There you go.
So they've been, what, their new kind of change in leadership?
Yeah, okay, last year.
Okay.
So they went through all their programming. Commissioner Edwards, we're doing external committees. If you had any reports to make.
No, I don't think I've got anything actually worth reporting on. But I know the one thing that is coming up is... Medic One is concerned that they're going to be losing some funding as a part of a legacy forest issue. And I've got more communications that are coming in from the schools and the fire districts about that topic. So I expect there will be more in the next few days, I suppose, that we'll be trying to cover on that topic. Kind of going back to how do you... How do you equate, quantify, I guess, what you don't get? You're suspecting what you're not going to get. But I don't know how many know exactly they didn't get X. So...
A little extra info. You guys read my letter, but beyond my letter, some further analysis was done with respect to Rochester because, you know, every... That was the first letter to come in.
Right, right, right.
And they were specific about the cuts, and they showed that the timber that's available, the non-legacy forest timber that's available to harvest, that would flow to Rochester School District would more than cover...
If they chose to make that...
If they chose to cut those trees and not these trees. So...
Which they're not willing to do yet.
Not yet. But at least in that one example, there is adequate alternative trees that would benefit that one beneficiary. I mean, you'd have to go beneficiary by beneficiary by beneficiary to make sure that absolutely nobody was harmed in any way. But that was the first example where the work was done, and it was coverable if they would just make different choices about which trees.
I would... I would guess there'll be testimony coming up this coming Tuesday on that. Is there... Are we having a meeting tomorrow?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, the next Tuesday, yeah. The 19th or something.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay. If I had to guess. That's it for me.
Okay, let's see. All my other stuff. I attended some of the things Commissioner Mejia mentioned. And I did attend the South Sound Riparian Workshop, which was an Alliance for Healthy South Sound sponsored event where we looked at riparian projects and how they have... What struggles they have to get funded and to get completed and to be successful. There are different breakout groups and stuff. And also attended the Capital Land Trust or the Community Land Trust event at Panorama, and Commissioner Claus did a good job on that panel. And something else. Oh, just canvassing board training. I have a new signature training for canvassing board. Okay, so let's go to Commissioner items then. Commissioner Mejia, anything besides the... Just anything at all?
You know, I always have something.
That's why I started.
We actually... We got a member... An email today from Commissioner Ozias, and it was for LSC, but since Commissioner Fournier is not here, I will bring it up. And they are planning on submitting a funding request during the upcoming session to help with their emergency operations center. And he was wondering if there were other counties who were interested in funding for EOC projects and would like to collaborate. And I was thinking about our Fairgrounds project, right? It was how we submitted it to the, you know, to the federal government. It was with TC Saves. And I think that if a county is moving forward with this, I don't see why we couldn't possibly also submit this for funding as well. But I just kind of wanted to see if there was any taste from the board to move forward with it and just have a general discussion on it.
So... He... Commissioner Ozias is Kalala, I want to say. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
And they're looking for federal money for their...
No, they're actually... They're doing it state for state money. They're doing a capital budget request, and they're going to be requesting $50 million to an emergency operation facilities throughout the state. So they're wondering if there's any other projects that, you know, counties are interested in submitting. And I was just thinking about the Fairgrounds project.
Yeah, I mean, I... That's... My understanding was that that's kind of how we characterized the request that we made at the federal level. So I don't see why we couldn't align that with at the state level.
Yeah.
If there's going to be other people making similar coordinated asks.
Rob?
Rob's not here.
Oh, Rob's not there?
We can follow up and put something together for you, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I'm not sure when. Let's see. When they're planning to, but it was just sent today, so... And I think it's Commissioner Ozias, the one who's directing kind of this. So we would have to respond directly to him instead of Paul from LSC. That was it.
Okay. Commissioner Claus, you think? No? Commissioner Edwards?
No, I think I'm good for now.
Okay. We had a quick discussion before we got here about the Representative Cotor's wants to give input on the LRA thing that Planning Commission is working on, and we're going to be... Commissioner Mejia sent some of his specific things to staff, and we're going to follow up on that.
Great. Okay. I haven't talked to him yet, but I see he's got to call him. So thank you.
I sent him an email just saying that we would check in with him before we took any action.
Any... Was there any reason that you know of that he wasn't able to make comment at that hearing? He said he was in attendance but was not able to make comment, so I don't know what that meant.
I didn't know what that meant either.
So public comment went by very quickly, like there weren't as many people, right? And so people who joined in a little bit later, but the public comment was kind of done, and they were already moving into the discussion of the actual... of the actual ordinance. So probably, I'm guessing, that's what happened. Like, I jumped on right after the fair board meeting, and public comment was already done, so...
Okay, so we have... So I'm just, as far as me and a Commissioner item beyond what I've already addressed, you know, the board, the last meeting before board, summer recess is essentially next Tuesday. And back when February, I think it was a planning session in January, February, where we kind of discussed the concept of an advisory vote on a charter. And it was told to us, I believe, by staff that if we wanted to have that on the November ballot, that it would have to be formally submitted in early August, and the board would have to make a decision that they wanted staff to work on that and prepare it by June. So I'm just bringing this up because I didn't have a second or third vote, but I still want to put it on the November ballot for an advisory vote. It would be the cheapest time to do it and the most participation that probably you'll ever get in the next four years at least. So I'm not going to make a motion if there's not going to be a second, so I guess I'm just going to...
I'll give you a second.
Okay, so...
I don't know if you'll get a third, though. I'll give you...
So I guess I'd like everyone... So with knowing there would be a second, I'll make a motion maybe next Tuesday morning.
Okay.
And if you guys could think about whether or not, you know, if you've changed your position or... There's a community... There's a new community group that's out there working on it. I've met with them. Maybe you guys have too and been convinced of the value. But it'd be a multi-year process, so it's not like anything's changing anytime soon. It's asking the voters, do they want to initiate this two-to-three-year process of looking at a county charter? And I'd just like to know where the voters are on it. And it would be very inexpensive to put it on a November advisory vote. And if it fails, then we'll shelve it for a few years and continue to talk to people about it.
What does that mean? Well, if it fails and then put it on a few years later, possibly. I know this... I think the state constitution talks about you can vote to move the seat of government. But if it fails, and it takes a super majority, and if it fails, you're not allowed to put it back on for four more years, I think. And so is there any such restrictions on going back to, you know, creating fatigue? Well, we just said we didn't want this or whatever.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm just wondering about. Is that a possibility? We could look at that and see if that, in fact, maybe does play in on the charter? Because as a general rule, I am not opposed to hearing what the public has to say about a particular topic as long as we're just not blindly moving ahead. So you might get that follow-up vote you need even for me. That's possible. I mean, the reason I have not been too thrilled about any changes is we haven't even got a year under our belt on the five commissioner process. And so, but that doesn't mean that there might not be an interest. But if the voters say no, do we then say, "Well, 60% said no, so we're not coming back for six years"? Or, you know, that kind of a thing? Because we've had that proposal that I want to say the charter has in some form moved forward almost three times.
Three.
I thought it was maybe four times over the last...
Since 1880.
Yeah, 30 years or so.
In the last 45 years, I think it's four.
I was in another elected position at the time, and some places had done away with the elected sheriff in those days. And so because I was sensitive to that position, I was opposed to it because of that. You know, I thought that's a better way to go. I personally think the chief of police should be elected somewhere in municipality, but I guess I'm an outlier on that. But some states do that. So anyway. But I'm not against hearing what the voters have to say. I would like to know a little more about are there any other restrictions in place? If it does, if it almost passes, does that mean you put it on the next year?
Yeah, and that's not what I...
I don't know.
Any board can do anything, right?
Well, maybe, yeah.
That's not what I would...
But there's state law that governs some things.
I think because this is an advisory, I'd be very, I don't know, but I would be highly surprised. Guess legal, that maybe between next Tuesday. But because this is an advisory vote, and it doesn't really bind us to do anything, I would be surprised if there's any rules on, you know, that would preclude us.
I mean, just as an example, we all talk about the fact, maybe we'd get more representation once we hit four hundred thousand, mainly because you're nominated and elected out of the district. Well, with the charter process, that could be one of the pluses, maybe, that go towards it, so...
Yeah, that's, we had public comment on that last week.
Yeah, so I'm, you know, I'm not locked in on anything. I'm open to hearing about it.
Okay, well, I'll make, I'll bring it up next Tuesday, just giving you guys a heads up, and we'll see where it goes. And then maybe Leonard can follow up with the...
We will, yeah.
Just whether or not there'd be any consequence to a failed advisory vote with respect to future actions of the board. Okay, well, those are the only Commissioner Items I had, you know. They were about the LRA. So there's nothing further? We will be adjourned. See everybody tomorrow at nine.